I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome to special Post Falls City Council meeting of September 24th, 2014. Clerk, please note that council members are present with the exception of Betty Ann Henderson, who may not be able to make it, and Councilor Malloy is attending via telephone. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, we have none. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We need to amend the agenda to include the ordinance to create the Development Corporation.
Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion to amend the agenda. Please, clerk, please take your role.
The motion is, once again, sorry, it's getting hard to hear on this end.
Oh, sorry, Joe. The motion is to amend the agenda to include an ordinance at the end of the meeting to create that corporation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Casson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none. New business, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss the Industrial Development Corporation that is required in order for the city to participate in industrial revenue bonds. So with that, I will turn it over. Danielle, welcome, is it going to be you, is it going to be Shelley?
I'm happy to describe it.
Okay, bullet Danielle.
Well, thanks for having me, mayor and council. I'm here in Johnstead because I am going to work on the potential financing that you're looking to do with the creation of this Economic Development Corporation.
Excuse me one sec. Joe, can you hear her all right?
About half the words.
Oh, is that any better?
A little bit, yeah.
I was just saying that I'm here to help with the creation of the Industrial Development Corporation in Johnstead because it's kind of a public finance matter to create an industrial development corporation and then to issue bonds on behalf of for-profit entities to help with economic development in your community. So the ordinance before you is to consider creating an Economic Development Corporation. I use that kind of interchangeably with industrial development, it's sort of the same for, it's just lingo either way, but it is to create an entity that allows, that's separate from the city council, that allows you to issue revenue bonds on behalf of for-profit entities that meet certain IRS requirements and then they get tax exempt financing. So it's a tool you can use to encourage people to develop their business in your community. It's fairly limited in that it's small entities and small business investments that can be made, the bonds can only be up to $10 million. They can only be spending up to $40 million in the community in a certain time period, but it does give an incentive for some small manufacturing type business to come and build here and they get the benefit of your tax exempt financing options. So that's a kind of a general summary. What you have with the ordinance is a charter which creates the corporation, it calls for a three-member board. We have, with Shelley's help, we have suggested the first three board members and after that we would, after assuming your creation, we will take up with that board considering bylaws and other kind of organizational documents to get going and then start considering the financing for the company that's at the table now.
And to give a little background, I think I included this in an email, but for everyone to hear, we were approached by this organization and they believe Panhandle Area Council was going to sell these bonds a few weeks ago. It was at a meeting where Wayne Sweeney from Washington Trust Bank, their attorney, said this can't be done by Panhandle Area Council, it has to be done through the city. So over the last two weeks, we have been just racing to get these documents prepared and the next few weeks will probably be fairly busy in order to get this corporation established, get the bylaws established. Once that's kind of underway and they have their inducement resolution going, things will slow down to where we have more time to make sure that everybody understands everything that's going on, gets the documents ahead of time. The board members that we have selected or recommending are Ron Jacobson, the mayor, Jerry Lyons from Community First Bank, and Randy Oakes, and I'm not sure what Randy's insurance company is.
Three Acorn.
Three Acorn, who has his office just across the street there with the Chamber Building. And so that would start out our board membership. And the board could be expanded at a later date, it can be up to, I think, seven if the city chose to do so.
Do we want to talk a little bit about the industrial revenue bonds themselves and how they are not an obligation of the city?
They are not an obligation of the city, so this corporation will be separate from the city and we'll keep it at an arm's length so that it's like an urban renewal in that stance. So urban renewal operates on its own, any bonds that it sells, only urban renewal is liable for and the city is not. This industrial revenue corporation will be the same way. The bonds are also going to be guaranteed through a secondary company, so the bonds are first guaranteed by the rents on the building itself. So ATC will be renting or leasing this facility and those lease rents will go to pay for the bonds and the interest. And then there'll be a secondary creditor who will guarantee those bonds with Washington Trust Bank. So even the industrial revenue corporation, although it's never 100%, things can always happen, will be pretty much harmless or held harmless. For the city, there's really no liability on our part, there is some work to be had, staff will spend some hours on this, we've already spent some hours on it, but it allows them to have the, about a point to a point and a half interest savings to them on these bonds.
Probably at least that much, yeah. And that's real advantage to the company that's looking to utilize industrial revenue bonds is that they then are able to receive financing on an interest, on a
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt basis. And again, the nice thing is, there is no liability that flows back to the city and to my knowledge, we will incur no costs, it will all be reimbursed.
Right, that's the indemnification agreement that was before you, is with the lakeside, so they will be liable for the, any costs that are incurred. I mean, there's some costs associated, like with my time, I'm not going to bill for it, Terry's time, Hillary's time, that's, we're not billing directly for that, but Danielle's and John Cafferty's and anyone outside the city that's actually creating an invoice, those will be billed back to the corporation.
And does the city need to contribute, and you've got matching funds?
Yeah, Hillary will discuss the request for matching.
Okay, good, thank you. Here, you had a question?
My question to go back.
What was the answer to that question?
What's that, Joe?
What was the answer to that question about matching funds?
They're going to address it in just a minute.
Oh, okay.
My question, back to the beginning, what was the, what prevented Panhandle Area Council from being able to?
They legally cannot do it, it has to be through a city or county as the industrial revenue bonds state statute allows for.
And the tax law requires that it be an industrial development corporation. Panhandle is just a nonprofit corporation and industrial revenue bonds are issued by governmental entities on behalf of for-profits. Thank you.
Alan.
When you say tax exempt, what taxes are exempt?
Income tax.
Just federal income tax, state income tax?
They continue to pay real estate property tax.
Okay, so the city will still get some tax.
Yeah, the taxes, the tax exempt, or, I mean, I'm sorry, when I say that it's tax exempt, it's on the sale of the bonds only, that's not addressing the building or any sales tax they'll pay, any fuel tax they'll pay, this is just versus if they were selling bonds on their own versus selling through the city, that interest rate savings.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Joe, any questions?
I think I'm following.
Okay. So do you want to move into the city matching funds or is that, do you need?
Do we need to do a motion since the ordinance is at the end?
I think you can do it at the end.
Okay. Hillary, did you want to stand up and talk about matching funds?
Good morning, mayor and council. So as part of the request from ATC, they are also working with the state on the tax reimbursement incentive program. So as part of that, they, the state requires that the city has a match and they have it, it's supposed to be a meaningful match, so there's no defined, you know, quantity on how much that means. It can be in-kind services, it could be fee waivers, it could be cash contribution or provision of infrastructure. In this case, the project site they're looking at, there's already all the infrastructure in place, at least the public infrastructure, so the road's in place, all the sewer water, the lighting and all the frontage improvements, so there's not a need to assist with any of that and it's in an urban renewal district, so that's already been taken care of. So the limitation for us is really what are the things that are kind of the soft costs? We can't waive cap fees for the waters and, or the sewer, I guess the water is East Green Acres, and then we can't waive impact fees. So what we're really looking at would be kind of the staff thing, so site plan review is one of those options, so that's, $2,000 is the fee that we charge for site plan review. They've already submitted the site, first site plan, it's currently under review, so that would be something where if that was to be waived by the city, we'd have to reimburse them for that to consider that a fee waiver. I guess it's possible to look at the building permit fee potentially, I don't know if that's a legal one or not.
It is, it's legally possible, yes.
So the estimation for that is, the building permit fee is probably about $30,000, so obviously a lot higher than the $2,000 of the site plan review fee. And then we wouldn't be able to do the connection fee because again, that's the water with East Green Acres. So I think those are pretty limited in terms of where we can offer matches, but other communities that have done this, Sandpoint and others, have done the in-kind services and then have done some of the fee waivers. For the in-kind services, I think it would be possible also to mention what you were saying, you know, the staff time that's associated with this.
Right, we could track the staff time, as I said, we're not actually billing that directly to the corporation, but we could track the staff time that we have spent putting this together and bringing it forward to council.
How much do we need to show to be meaningful?
There is no, and I've asked that, there's no quantification, they said whatever you can give up, you know, and, oh, and the other thing that they had asked was the property tax exemption, and I know that's kind of a complicated issue and I don't know if Shelley or Danielle.
Because it's in an urban renewal district, I know in the past, if they're in an urban renewal district, we've not been in favor of writing a letter of support to the commission for the property tax waiver.
Right.
But we can open that for discussion for the council.
Well, we may not even need to cross that bridge, correct?
Correct. I mean, it's, you know, something that they've said and the Commerce keeps saying that that's, you know, Director Sayre is wanting communities to consider doing property tax exemptions for a meaningful match on certain things, but that's also for community development block grants or other things where there's a bigger amount that's going into it. So I think to look at probably the site plan review and/or building permits would be the two.
At this point, because all the infrastructure's in place, they aren't eligible for community development block grant, they have indicated if they were to expand later, that that might be something that they look at.
Right.
Okay. Any questions? Joe, you have any questions?
I admit I'm having a hard time hearing, but I guess if there's, could be kind of a fictitious example of, or it could be a real example, I guess, of how this process works. So an industrial business comes in and is talking about coming to Post Falls and they want to save money, and so we've created this corporation, what happens?
You mean what happens after we create the corporation?
Right, and the business wants to get built.
The business will then go to, Danielle, you want to address that? You look like you're ready.
Well, the way that we set it up typically is that they would approach the board of the Industrial Development Corporation and the board would ask them to fill out an application, which provides some preliminary information about whether or not the project would comply with the tax requirements. And then from there, we would, assuming that we thought we could move forward, we would have them enter into the indemnification and compensation agreement, which we will do a separate indemnification and compensation agreement here for the Industrial Development Corporation. You have one for the city, that the city's considering, but we also want one once the corporation takes over, because the corporation, like you said, truly has, they have no revenue, no assets, and the city has no liability to cover their costs, so it has to be covered by the entity that's coming forward with the proposal. But, so we would have them do that and then we would just move forward with the bond financing at that point, if they entered into the indemnification and we were satisfied that they, you know, through the application process that we thought they would meet the requirements. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so the bond financing, then what happens? So does, where do the bonds come from? Who's paying for them?
Well, it can go either way, I mean, the bonds can be, in this case, Washington Trust Bank is just going to buy the industrial revenue corporation's bond. So, well, it's basically like a two-layer loan agreement, we'll sell a bond to Washington Trust, we, the Industrial Development Corporation, will sell a bond to Washington Trust and have a
So would we just create these bonds out of nothing and sell them to the bank?
Just like any other note or bond that the city issues.
Right, Joe, if we were to decide that we wanted to expand the water plant right now, we'd go out and sell bonds for $4 million, we'd use those funds to expand the water plant, and then the rates from those users would pay for that. This is the same, we're going to go out and sell bonds, they're going to build the building, and then the rents from that building will go to pay for the payments on those bonds. The industrial revenue corporation will be the ones in charge of the bonds, so they will receive the rents and then they will pay for the bonds.
Okay, so the, so the liability then, so say everything, everything goes under, you know, the business fails, it doesn't happen, then who's on the hook for all the, all the money hanging out?
Washington Trust in this case.
And it could be a different bank in another case?
Sure, or it could be the public marketplace, I mean, we could go sell these bonds into the investment market and then, you know, individual bondholders buy bonds in, you know, $5,000 increments. So whoever is the purchaser of the bonds takes the risk if the company fails.
Right now, we're setting this up for ATC, but this industrial revenue corporation will be available for other users to come forward and apply also. So in the future, it may not be Washington Trust Bank, it could be someone else.
Okay, so Washington Trust buys the bonds, they're getting interest on that too, who's paying the interest?
The interest is paid from the rents. So the rents on the building will pay for the bond principal and the bond interest. The savings they're receiving at this point versus just going out on the market on their own is that interest rate will be one to one and a half percent lower than if they just sold and went out on their own and did a regular lease.
Because it's kind of, because of the government entity?
Because of it being tax exempt.
Now, the tax exempt is, I guess I'm, forgive me for not being as educated, the tax exempt part, you say it's for sales tax, I don't understand how
No, it's not for sales tax.
How indebtedness is, is subject to sales tax anyway?
It's not sales tax.
It's not sales tax, it's federal and state tax.
It's income tax on the interest income. So Washington Trust doesn't have to pay interest, they don't have to pay tax on the interest that they receive on the bond.
On the interest that they receive on it?
Yeah.
So really, it's to the benefit, it's to the benefit of the bondholder, not necessarily the, the business?
No, because that translates into an interest rate reduction to the corporation. So if they went and made the loan on a commercial basis, say the rate is five, but because the bank doesn't have to pay interest on the, or pay income tax on the interest that they receive, they're willing to do it for three and a half percent instead of five.
And that affects the bank?
Is there a requirement that the, that the rate be lower?
It just is pricing wise, I mean, the bank will give a, give you a tax exempt and a taxable rate. And at different times, those rates are farther apart or closer together, but right now, it sounds like they're pretty materially apart.
And you just wouldn't sell if you didn't get the tax exempt rate to be tax advantageous to you.
How does this affect taxpayers?
Doesn't. I mean, they pay property tax, right?
Yeah, I mean, the effect, the net effect to the taxpayers is we have jobs that are high quality, high paying jobs added into the community, they will pay sales tax on their materials, they'll pay fuel tax for anything, they'll pay their
Property tax.
Yeah, the property tax on the facility, which right now is going to go to urban renewal. But as far as the industrial revenue corporation, there's no cost to the taxpayers at all.
No impact, no negative impact.
There's no impact. No negative impact.
All right, so essentially, essentially what it is, is that the one and a half million people of the state of Idaho are, are making a very small investment in the hopes that there will be 300 jobs in Post Falls and those people will eventually pay sales tax, is that correct?
No, I don't know where you're getting the number, Joe.
I'm, so there's, so there's a tax exempt, so there's, there's money that's not going to the state, right?
Right, and the federal government. So there is, yeah, there's some foregoing of income tax by the state and the federal government.
And the hope is to waive that tax to create more taxes after the business is up?
Correct.
That's right. Joe, if you want, you can do what I did, you can Google industrial revenue bonds of Idaho and you can read the information, it's pretty thorough.
I can forward that document to everyone, I downloaded it yesterday and sent it to a couple people. So there's, in 2008, the Commerce Department, I think based on a Boise sale, did up a little like study guide, I think is what they're calling it, on industrial revenue bonds in the state of Idaho, it lists 12 cities and the counties that have done this, or that are chartered to have an industrial revenue corporation.
And tells you what the advantages, disadvantages, et cetera, it's a good document.
I tried getting on there some last night, but the baby kept crying, so I couldn't quite do it.
I'll shoot it to you if you want.
All right.
Any questions?
I, I had a list of questions, he brought up some, and several of them have been answered already just in the dialogue, but it's more on the creation of this public corporation, so it will be ongoing, not just for this one project, ongoing, the cost to the taxpayers not. My question is on the, is there any council oversight? So this isn't dissimilar to the Urban Renewal Agency, except there's not going to be paid staff or, I'm just, I want to see what it is that we're creating, is there going to be council oversight? I spent a lot of time on the Secretary of State's page, Title 50, Chapter 27, you know, looking through all of that, and it's really good information on there. But the one thing I couldn't find is, you know, where it talks about the makeup of the board, I'm wondering if there is in fact council, city oversight, if having the mayor also as a member of that board, would that ever be a conflict if the city, i.e. council, is making any decisions regarding that board where you're a member of this body and a member of that body as well? I guess I don't know enough about it too.
There's no council oversight, except that the mayor appoints the members of the corporation and, with the council's approval, so there's that. You help set up who the membership is and, on an ongoing basis, and then when there's an actual bond issue before the Economic Development Corporation, they have to bring it to the council for sign off.
Perfect.
So I don't think it creates a conflict to have the mayor or another member of the council on the other board, I think that it's almost like, I mean, that happens a lot on urban renewal where there'll be one member of council on the urban renewal board, and I think it's good for connectivity and we see it all the time. I mean, we do this often with county commissioners, and so there's three county commissioners and one of them will serve on the Industrial Development Corporation and kind of be like the report back to the council just to keep everybody up to speed. So I don't think, I don't see there being a conflict.
And the mayor will serve one year and then it will, he will be switched out with another member. Right now, it's, we have them where it's one term for one year, one term for two years and one term for three years, and it's listed in the ordinance and the order that they go. Also, I just forwarded the study guide to everyone, so you should have that in your email.
Any other questions?
Follow up something Kerry started.
Joe, hang on, hang on one sec, Joe, go ahead, Skip.
Follow up, Kerry said, is there any staff involved in this organization? Do we start creating a bureaucracy here?
No, we were talking about actually using Panhandle Area Council to administer this industrial revenue corporation, the interest will pay for those, whatever hours are needed to oversee the bonds, basically. But we're trying to keep
Essentially, all we need is an escrow account?
Yes, and really, I mean, when you look at what we've done with urban renewal, I know when I started here, I was the treasurer for urban renewal and the treasurer for the city, and our attorney was the same, and we've really tried to split all of that out and not have staff. If urban renewal needs our staff, they bill, they pay for it and we use billable hours, and we do the same thing with this industrial revenue corporation.
I just don't want to see a paid director and all of this stuff start happening.
No, no.
That was my concern.
There's really not going to be the need, all it's going to be is
Hopefully not.
Get the check for the lease, which we'll probably set up automatically, and pay the bonds. And then if someone comes forward with an application, it would be reviewed with the board members, so I mean, it's a pretty simple structure.
Joe?
Hi, another dumb question here, what's, what is the purpose of creating a separate corporation and bureaucracy? Why don't we just issue the bonds as the city?
Required by law.
Yeah, we can't legally do that.
So this is kind of a loophole to the law then, huh?
Well, it's, it's to keep the liability separate, because it, you don't want some, you know, for-profit entities' liability on your balance sheet as the city, and you can't really do that anyway with the lending of credit, constitutional prohibition, so it kind of serves a dual purpose.
Okay, so I keep hearing there's really no liability, so what is the liability?
Well, if the, if the bonds were issued by the city, then you have, then, then there's more of a tie between you and those bonds. So if they're city bonds issued on behalf of this company, it'd be a lot harder to argue that your revenues aren't, you know, at stake if there were to be a default, but here, it's a separate, you know, it's like a single purpose entity where you break up liability based on business, you know, structures or whatever, it's to keep it, keep it totally distinct and keep the revenues of the city totally separate from the revenues that are generated by this project and then paid to Washington Trust.
I, I don't know, I guess I'm still unclear as to what the liabilities are.
Okay, Joe, if the city were to issue the bonds, then the city's taxes that we receive as revenue would be liable, so if this company goes bankrupt, the building goes under, then we would be liable for whatever balance was left owed on those bonds. By creating this industrial revenue corporation, if the bank, the company goes bankrupt and those bonds are outstanding, they could go after the industrial revenue corporation, which has zero assets and zero revenues, and basically, Washington Trust Bank is held without any revenues to seek in response to those outstanding bonds. So it keeps the liability
That just made it clear, yours, Crystal, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Do we need a, we've addressed the Industrial Revenue Development Corporation, matching funds, do you want to just get into indemnification or do we need to take action on those two prior?
Well, we probably need to let Hillary know whether it's okay to, let, she needs to let the state know, Department of Commerce know if we're willing to waive the site plan review and building permit fees.
Right, so kind of, so here's what they're looking for, you can see this on there. So we have to fill out this letter and it has to show what form of match we're providing and the amount and a description, so as I mentioned before, the two that we would be looking at would be, the fee waiver and in-kind services would be the two categories.
Joe, we're just looking at a letter that will go to Jeff Sayre, the director of the Idaho Department of Commerce, and as Hillary says, there are basically four categories in which we can make contribution, cash contribution, which we cannot make, is listed, but the fee waiver in kinds and in-kind services is what we would propose, or what staff is proposing, that we contribute in order to have a meaningful contribution as required by the Department of Commerce.
And so Hillary, you're looking for a motion, are you looking for an amount or are you looking, because you don't know the exact amount.
Just a motion, yeah, just a motion.
Yeah, a motion, but also saying, would you support the fee waiver associated with site plan review and/or the building permits, or you want just one of those, and then the in-kind services we could list for
Right.
The work efforts associated with the industrial revenue bonds.
So there's three categories that you can
Right.
Address.
Well, I'd make that motion that we, for our matching, we use a site plan review, fee waiver, building permit fee, waiver, and in-kind of our staff.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion, Skip had a question.
Hillary, under provision of infrastructure, the city actually did provide, through urban renewal and forgone, given up taxes.
Right.
And I think that needs to be asterisked in a letter explaining how much we have given up and forgone.
To show what's already been done.
To go with it, so they understand our, our contribution is way beyond the other two.
Okay, that's fair, yeah.
Good point, thank you. Can we?
I'm all it is, I'm still having a hard time hearing, but is, so this match we're talking about, we're talking about waiving permitting fees, waiving site plan review fees, these sorts of things, what, what fund is this matching?
It's matching the Idaho tax incentive program, so they started a new program this year that will allow the company to receive back rebates, I think is how it's termed, the terminology they're using.
Income tax reimbursement incentive.
Yes, so they need to have the
So the, the city has to give up something in order for the state to give up something?
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
And they don't define what that
And we don't normally do that to any other, for any businesses, correct?
We have used that same type of matching program for community development block grants and for the state opportunity fund. We've only done it in association with a new company coming in and creating jobs.
Right.
Alan, question? Oh, go ahead, Joe.
So, are there, being this is open-ended, is there, would there be any kind of, I don't know, just an internal agreement, I guess, or anything that, say, a business comes in and will compete against a business that exists in Post Falls? And so this business suddenly gets free permits waived, tax-free financing, yada, 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 and has a, an advantage over an existing business, do you see this as a possibility and how does everybody feel about that?
That's a perfect segue, Joe. Hillary and I will be coming forward to council, asking the council to adopt a policy in the future that will define who's eligible for us to do or use these matching funds. And so that is a discussion that we'll be coming forward to a council in a workshop to ensure that we aren't creating a situation where we are arbitrarily allowing one company to receive something another company does not get. So it will be a policy, many cities across the United States just have what they call it will be a policy. Many cities across the United States just have what they call an economic development policy that defines what you have to do in order to receive a waiver by the city council. Not to say, once you have that policy, you can always change it, but you would adopt a policy saying, here are the guidelines.
Joe, and the other, the other thing on that, Joe, on the income tax reimbursement incentive, that not only applies to new companies, but to existing companies that expand to meet the same type of job creation requirements. So that would be eligible for them as well.
Okay. That's actually a positive. I like that.
Kerry?
And the one thing to, I think what Joe's, it's a valid point about not having someone's competitor. In the manufacturing arena, you're not going to find that as prevalent as you would in retail.
Right.
That you have a competitor. So I don't think that that would be an issue.
Not with this company.
And hopefully, this would actually create where we would have more manufacturers who would supply parts to them wanting to locate, which I know has been a focus for the chamber to pursue in conjunction with the city, facilities that would supply these manufacturers also.
Ancillary businesses hopefully will relocate as well.
Right.
Ellen, you got a question?
As far as the dollar amounts, are we going to have an opportunity to look at this again? Or are we just opening up?
For this particular project or once in the future?
For this particular project.
This one, we are being asked to provide this letter of commitment. It sounds like the Economic Advisory Council is going to be meeting either next week or the following week to review that tax reimbursement incentive program for this particular company. So I think they are wanting this soon. I guess it's, I could ask if...
Can we come up with the number?
Bring it back.
Well, 2,000 and 30,000 are the number. So 2,000 for site plan review, 30,000 for
building permits. Staff time, we'll go back and estimate, but you're probably looking at less than 10,000.
And again, as Mr. Hissong said, if we could throw a number in there that we are not giving at this point, but that has been contributed to that area in urban renewal, that will beef up that number, I think, which would then be appealing to the Department of Commerce.
We can send you a copy of this once we have the numbers calculated.
Well, here's my question. I mean, the $2,000 site plan review, not a problem. The building permit, 30 grand? I'm thinking if we can come up with a lot of other matching funds, maybe we don't have to give up that whole 30 grand on the building permit.
Right.
Or are we looking for a massive amount of money? Are we trying to find?
I can contact some other communities to find out what their number was. It's also possible that you could maybe do a partial waiver on the building permit fee instead of the whole thing.
That's what I'm talking about.
And so, yeah, once we do calculate what's the time spent and what we expect to spend on the in-kind services and then the provision of infrastructure, we can get that back to you and...
Yeah, because to Skip's point, I mean, we spent a lot of money on infrastructure there, and that might be a pretty large number that we've already spent. We don't have to necessarily throw in the building permit.
And I don't know how they'll look at that if it's passed.
Normally will not let you use that, because that is, that was expended in the past and not specific to this company and getting them to locate here.
I think we could show it.
But Hillary will contact them and find out.
And they've got your direction, then, is to try to reduce that if we can?
Sure.
Okay. Motion second. Kerry, do you have another comment?
Well, just one clarification on the in-kind in the motion, where it's an in-kind staff time. That is to the exclusion of legal and what else?
Correct. So...
Staff.
Yeah, legal's the only one who we have invoicing separately that will be reimbursed through the Industrial Revenue Corporation.
So just staff, if you're in kind services.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Orson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We need to talk about the indemnification now?
Yes.
Okay. The indemnification agreement with Lakeside Capital Group. Lakeside Capital is a company that will own the facility itself, the real estate.
And the indemnification agreement basically holds the city harmless. This is, I believe, just a replacement of the agreement that you adopted at the last council meeting. They had the wrong name in this, in the agreement.
Well, they actually added their, the guarantor, because the ATC-Lakeside, the company that they're creating just for the business here, really doesn't have any assets at this point. So it was pretty, their attorney suggested that we add on the guarantor, which I thought was a really honest thing for him to do.
Guarantor being Lakeside?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the only change that John made over the weekend.
Need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
Any questions on that topic? Not an entertaining motion.
Move to approve the indemnification agreement with Lakeside Capital Group.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Orson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And not to muddy the waters, but the Industrial Revenue Corporation will also have an indemnification agreement with them to hold themselves harmless. So they will adopt that as a board.
Okay. It's not, oh, yeah, we did add an item.
Ordinance.
We did add the ordinance.
Okay. I'm going to give this a shot. Move to place the ordinance authorizing and providing for the establishment, organization, and operation of a public corporation to implement Title 50, Chapter 27 Idaho Code as amended, approving a charter for such corporation specifying the powers, authority, and limitations of the public corporation providing for control and supervision of the public corporation by the city on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? And I believe she just read that, so I don't know if we will need to have Danielle read it again, but with that, clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orson?
Aye.
Motion passes. And again, I think it has been read, so the next motion will be to approve it, right?
Move to approve the ordinance authorizing and providing the establishment and organization and operation of the public corporation to implement Title 50, Chapter 27 Idaho Code as amended, approving a charter for such corporation specifying the powers, authority, and limitations of the public corporation providing for control and supervision of the public corporation by the city and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Please take the roll.
Orson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Counsel comments?
I'd just say that when the citizens ask the council, the city, to help create jobs within the city, there's not that much that we can do, but this is one thing that we can do. So I think it's a great step forward for the future that we can at least do this to attract more business to post falls.
And you'll find this company, I think, to be very interesting with the composites that they make. It's quite interesting.
And the connection with who is involved with this is an individual who can also bring more companies to post falls. So I think having a positive relationship with them is going to benefit the city long-term.
Mayor comments? I have none. I don't believe we need an executive.
Actually, since, since my attorney's not here, I just want to add something, although there's no, no action to be taken, so it's all good. We did send out a list on East Greenacres of five potential individuals to shut off water. So Finance Department has been dealing with customers who have not in the past been facing the fact that their water can be disconnected. In the past, we've turned them over to collections. We've taken them to small claims court, other methods in order to collect from them. They have not been happy, the individuals who have reached. And one individual, for example, their account balance was $3,200. So these are people who, at $45 a month, have not paid for many, 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 many months. One of the comments that came back to Jason yesterday was, well, you're coming at me from all angles, I believe. And yes, when we do try to collect debt, we do use all angles. I want to make you aware, because you may get emails. We did actually shut someone off this morning of the five. One did not pay, and we have not received any contact from this individual at all. But, you know, there may be letters to the editors. There may be emails coming to council, or they may come address council at a council meeting. And Finance stands willing and ready to explain exactly what is going on with those accounts. And we're being more than fair. They're allowed to make arrangements. The arrangements have to pay for more than the interest on the bad or outstanding debt. We had someone who offered to pay $10 a month when their interest charges were 50. We can't do arrangements like that. Their account balance would continue to climb. So it's been very effective. East Greenacres has been excellent to work with. They really want that relationship with the city. And I think Tina from East Greenacres actually stated that, well, without the city sewer, you wouldn't have the availability of having water at your house anyways. And so they do feel like there is a strong connection between the water and sewer and allowing this agreement to be in place. But I just wanted to give you a heads up. You may potentially hear from some of these, we're doing like five a month, and then after the first of the year, then they'll just be a regular part of our process. We did the same thing with Ross Point 15 years ago when we started implementing with them. Started slowly. It was a smaller area than East Greenacres. And now they are just a regular part of our normal shut-off process. And it's really, I mean, no one sees themselves as any different. And because East Greenacres has been different, they kind of see themselves as different at this point.
Well, what's interesting, too, is comments have been made here that, you know, criticizing the city for the way they spend the tax dollars, and yet you've got people utilizing city services and not paying for it, which then falls on the shoulders of other citizens to pay. So in the past, we've had no ability to collect, no ability to enforce the shut-off, if you will. And again, Jason, congratulations. That's a huge step forward. And what was the total dollar? Seventy-some thousand?
75,000.
That is owed to the city for services provided that folks have not paid.
And our stellar attorney, who's not here, did say yesterday, you know, one of the responses could be, you know, we did not file theft of services against them, which is criminal. And that's true. We would not do that. But legally, you know, you could.
Kerry?
Good job, Chris.
Duly noted. It just occurred to me that you thought last week, Mr. Terry Werner, was your last city council meeting.
Yes. But we decided to have an extra one just for him.
Just for him, Terry.
Who knows what will happen between now and next week? We could have many more, so...
We have a celebration. Celebration? You're leaving. Are we celebrating you're leaving? Or are we, thank you for Terry on...
Next Friday from 11 to 1.
A week from Friday?
Yes.
A week from Friday from 11 to 1.